All right, 6:30 we'll start the meeting. Okay, so we are taking off Chief Warful Highway Safety. Do you have any other amendments to the agenda?
Do you want to not do the second executive session seeing as how you're down one board member tonight?
What does everyone think?
I guess we probably should all be here.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so Austin removed the second executive. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Move to adopt as amended.
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the minutes of December 4th?
I didn't have anything.
I didn't either, okay.
I did have just one thing that if the question I brought up to on the personal property taxes, if the D and B's furniture and so forth was considered taxable or not, I don't think that stated it really clearly. Sounded like I was questioning Butch if it was taxed by the state.
Oh.
But I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. Town manager's report?
All right, one thing to add, we encountered a water line break on the plane route today. There was a line that wasn't on the plans that we found.
Oh.
So there's a boil water notice in effect through here right now. Sean's hoping to get test results tomorrow. So I'm sure we'll be fine, but gotta do it. I think most of you know now the Deepo Hill Covered Bridge was hit by a vehicle over a week ago. Fortunately, it was minimal damage, nonstructural. Chad and I have looked at already, we can fix it in-house and we're gonna build an insurance company for whatever it costs for us labor and time, labor and materials to fix it, so. So our project here is continuing through winter for as long as weather permits. We are hoping to have the road remain open with occasional one-way alternating traffic here as soon as they clear out of the intersection, so. It's coming along great, actually. We did look at, we had a landowner come in yesterday to see if we could add a stub for a potential future service line for one of the houses behind them that's off George Lane. That's the only one out there that's not on sewer. So we're gonna just tee it and run a stub so that they, in the future, they can tie on. I mean, now's the time for us to do it, so. The budget, we got this in here too, but the current budget draft shows a 1.4% increase in the amount to be raised by taxes for the general fund. And 1.37 for the amount to be raised by taxes for the highway fund, so. And that equals out to about 1.384% total, so. And weather, we fared out well with all the rain last week. We, at that, when I wrote this last week, we only had to close Elm Street, but we had to do Deepo Hill for a little bit too, so. Bridge 108, I think you all saw that they're shut down for the winter season. They were hoping to pour the deck. I think I informed you guys last time that they wanted to look at their calculations to make sure that when they poured it, that the fascia beams wouldn't. So they decided it'd become too cold because they do have to cover that concrete and heat it for like almost two weeks, so figured they'd wait till spring to do it. It's all ready to go. They've got their screed there and everything, so when they open back up, the deck will be poured. And that's really all I have for the last couple of weeks. It's been fairly quiet.
Okay. Any questions? I know. Any questions for town manager, anyone? All right, any select board member remarks this evening? Nope. Any public comments? No? Okay. All right, old business, budget discussion. Edition four, every four?
So I did speak with Mark earlier. And I gotta find his message here. And he did have a couple of questions that he wanted me to bring up in the meeting for the budget. One of his concerns, and Ann and I have already talked about it, but I wanted it to be on the record for the meeting. He was one, he thought that the ammo line for the police department was too high and Ann actually has reason why it went, why it's at what it is. It's only really up by, I think, $700.
It was level funded from, so we're in fiscal year 2025. The budget's $6,000 and actually the line item is new equipment slash ammo. They're both under the same. And it, we level funded it fiscal year 2026. It's up $700 compared to fiscal year 2024. And in part, it's due to the fact that we need new body cameras and car cameras. So we're looking ahead at what it, it's, but it's probably gonna cost more than the $6,000 that's budgeted. But we're still trying to get figures for that to bring to you guys. So I level funded it for the year. I didn't add any additional funds. I think he was looking at fiscal year '24 to '25 instead of '25 to '26 is what I could figure.
And the other question he had, which I explained to him today, he's the library appropriation last year, and I'm gonna just read you what he sent me. Says the library took a big increase. Do we have a breakdown in expenses for this year and last year? Maybe this should be dialed back 10% to 112.5. This is an appropriation, so.
Right, but also it didn't increase from last year. It looks like they're, they go by a calendar year. That was, remember that, that question got brought up at last town meeting because it said 112 and then, but right in one spot and then it said 125 somewhere else. And that's where, how it was explained.
So I have no problem asking Shelley for her budget and I'm sure she will give it to me.
No, it's open and he can come to any, any meeting.
But again, it's an appropriation, so.
Yep.
Well, I've got probably the same list you've got because he called me. Well, he's on, you know.
Those are the only two.
Just had his knee done, so.
Those are the only two I have in the budget. He had some for the warrant too, so.
Oh, I've got, I've got one more for the budget, but he just wanted some accounting to justify the increase because it did go up quite a bit last year. He wanted just accounting to justify why.
Right, I'm just saying he's asking in the wrong spot. He's gotta ask the library. It's not our, weird, it's not our.
No, I understand that, but that's, yeah.
Yeah.
There was a lot of discussion.
He wants us to ask them to get that to us.
Yeah.
And my, my answer to Mark today was that, you know, that's kind of up to the library to discuss that at town meeting as they're the ones that are putting the appropriation forward and if they got enough folks to write it, it has to go on the warrant regardless. So, you know, I'm, that's sure, but I can get budget numbers.
We can get it. I'm just saying it's, yeah, he's just, I don't think he understands it's not, I mean, that's, it's an appropriation. It's nothing to do with us at all.
And they did come up here and discuss it with us too.
They did, yep.
And they also discussed it at town meeting. And I think the people overwhelmingly supported it.
Right. His other was on fuel, heat and diesel. If we had an accounting of the gallons that have been used because the price has come down quite a bit from what it was a year or so ago, so.
We can get, we can get that from ourselves, sure.
On those numbers.
I have it in Excel spreadsheet at the end of the year when I do the diesel fuel tax refund thing. But projecting two years out what our economy's gonna be and where the prices are gonna be, I didn't wanna do a massive drop-off and then get caught with our pants down.
Yeah.
So I'm waiting to see what's historically gonna be happening. Yep. But no, I, at the end of the year, I do do something that has all of the gallons.
So we can see from year to year what we.
Yeah, I started it last year.
And it is hard to predict when we're trying to set a budget that doesn't go in effect until next July 1st, you know.
Right.
A lot can happen in seven months, so. So anyway, with the budget, I forgot what we're talking about for a minute. I'd say Ann and I did these budget notes, but I said, I went to her and said, hey, I was at my VLCT passive meeting and they did this great thing with their budget notes and before I was, I think, done talking, Ann had typed this entire thing out. So just looking at not every line, but lines where we saw some changes and like, I think this is a good thing for you guys to have too at town meeting because if there are questions on some things, it's, it's pretty easy just to read off on this, but you know, I think it's a good, a good review of what we've been up to for the last, you know, month and a half.
Yeah.
So if you guys can hold on to this, that'd be great.
Okay.
Keep this paper.
Well, I, I mean, as far as what we've done with the budget, I think we've come a long way since we started and, you know, we are down, you know, even below 3% now. I mean, we're at, you know, 1.4 basically for both for highway and, and general fund, so I mean, I would recommend that you guys approve the budget unless there are any drastic changes that you think need to be made.
I know, I mean, this is, again, this is our fourth or fifth.
Yep. And we all said we'd be happy if we could get to three.
I know.
If five, we started out, five would've been great, but even, so we're even better off what we anticipated.
Right. I mean, it's reasonable with that, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
You cut anymore, you're gonna be cutting off.
And that's the worry, you know, Tom and I were talking earlier this week, you know, next year, I mean, the, for, for the two years that I've been here, you know, we've been able to find these things, Ann and I and the department heads and the budget of things that we you know, cut or, you know, just do something different with. We're, we're gonna run out of those.
Yep.
And just give you a heads up on that and hopefully, you know, the increases that we can't control don't go out of control for the next, you know, few years, but it's hard to tell, so. But I think, I think we're at a really good, in a really good spot with the budget right now.
So when do we normally approve the budget?
It has to be by, by mid-January, it's the latest, so.
I think by next meeting you wanna do it.
Next meeting, yeah.
I'd like to see a full board here when we approve it.
Well, your next meeting's January 8th, so it has to be next.
Kind of no choice then, yeah.
So I would say.
I don't know if I'll be here.
Well, that's right, you may not be.
That's the day that the legislation opens. And that's not normally, did we officially switch? Because that isn't normally, it wouldn't normally be our.
Well, the first is the holiday.
We discussed it when we did the calendar in, in March. We discussed it then and decided to do the eighth instead of the first because no one really wanted to do it on New Year's Day.
Right, and someone didn't know she was gonna be in the legislature.
No, not them.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, what does the first day look like, Butch? Can I, will I get home in time?
It's, it's.
If you wanted to change the night, you could.
Depends how much action you take in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Depending on who gets elected speaker. You may have quite a bit of action in the afternoon.
Yeah.
If you have a, a new speaker, there probably won't be as much action, so.
Okay.
It's a toss-up right now. I've, I've been there as late as four o'clock, five o'clock on the first day and I've gone home at one o'clock on the first day in the past.
Okay.
Anyway, usually the first day of a new session is pretty busy.
I guess I could zoom in too.
We could always change our night. I mean, we could go to seven. Nothing says we can't.
Tuesday night?
Long as we bolster.
Could zoom in though, even if it's just for
Yeah.
two minutes.
Whatever you guys are comfortable with, I can make, I'll make it. Well.
You could call us too.
I'm not super tech savvy, let's say. I could just call, right?
Well, at this point, I guess my thought would be at this point, you're in favor of it, so if you're not here, we know what your thoughts are on the budget. I mean, we could still go the eights and.
Yeah, let's just do that. Let's keep it a Wednesday and I'll just try my best to either get here or zoom in.
You were a yes for.
Well, she's being like Hank, how many years was he, did he miss?
Well, Hank always voted no though, just as a matter of principle.
Just as matter of principle, yeah.
Wow, he'd be here, but then in the process he wasn't here, so.
I'm in favor of that one.
All right, so we'll continue the budget conversation on January 8th.
Yep.
Okay, bids for the body for the new F-600?
Okay, so Chad did call the company that you had given us the number on. We actually first tried to find their website. They don't have one. But he did call, they don't do any of the fuller sized trucks like we do. They're more like Iroquois. They said they couldn't do the, the wing or a side dump, so. But for anything smaller, they're, no, they're more Iroquois related, like they do up there in Heinsburg. So that's, that's where we're at with that. So we have the, still the same two. My recommendation is to go with Viking.
I'll make a motion to go with the Viking, however you pronounce it.
Rosemont.
I know the size.
Size?
Yeah. What was the amount on that, Dave?
E5.
Uh, $78,300.
No, second motion.
The other one from Fairfield was 88.5, so ten grand less.
All right, wait for us in a second. Any further questions or discussion on that?
Has Chad reviewed these so that they're comparable?
Chad's the one that got these quotes for us, so. And he's, I know he's met with Mike at Viking and actually the Fairfield one originally came when we bought the truck from the Ford, like passed it along, so, you know, but, um, yeah. I know Chad's talked to Mike a couple of times at Viking, so. And thank you.
We need to vote.
I was waiting for Dan.
Viking was actually less anyway.
Yep, by ten, by ten grand.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, new business, a potential opening of class three and four roads to ATVs.
So, you know, we talked about this, I don't know, this summer maybe, and David giving us some stuff on Hubbardton and Benson. Mike Markowski had reached out to me last week for the same thing. I said, hey, come see me. We've got some stuff already, so I tossed it his way. Him and John are here. They've done some more research with some other towns and would like to talk to the board about what we could do to make this happen.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So we, Mike actually brought this to me and I got involved a little bit late, but we reached out to the executive director of Vasa who was a huge help. And they pointed us in the direction of the town of Bakersfield, which just adopted an ordinance, so essentially they sell passes to people that want them for their ATVs for town road use. Has nothing to do with Vasa. Vasa only gets involved in connector trails. They don't get involved with town highways. So we, we actually sent Dave, the ordinance signed by the select board.
Which I handed out, Ann handed it to you guys this evening.
And we were actually, we were actually trying to go for not just class three and four, but the twos also.
The what also?
Class twos.
Class twos.
So like Whipple Hollow Road.
Right.
Yeah.
Florence Roads and Brandon. That type of.
Yeah.
I also heard tonight the town of Whiting adopted a similar ordinance. I don't have a copy of that, but I can get it.
It's just been the last three or four months.
And it's, it's a, the Bakersfield ordinance is a very simple ordinance that, that pretty much eliminates any liability for the town. I mean, the, the operators all have to be registered and it cites, it cites different state statutes on the registration and minimum liability insurance on the, the machines themselves carried by the operator. It would just, the, the, basically the, the town commitment would be say like the police force enforcing permitting and I think even on that, on that that ordinance, there's even a speed limit restriction on it to 30 to 35 miles an hour.
At a rate of speed not to exceed 35. This is a pretty good ordinance though.
It's very simple. It's to the point and it, and it covers any liability the town may incur and basically washes the town of any liability other than if they're, they're already maintained highway system.
And it gives the, the town the ability to actually charge fees for the use of their roads.
I thought that was against the law.
So I'm gonna look this up because I did too, so I'm gonna find out from someone maybe other than the league because the league said that there was one of these that said the stickers are free, the VLCT told the town we could not charge a fee for the use of public roads, so I would like to see which one is correct because we have two different versions.
Maybe where they call to Bakersfield's slide board and see, you know, how they do it or, or the clerk up there to see how they do it.
Yeah, they reference purchasing a sticker for $10.
I'll go say, might be a sticker or something, so I'm sure you can get around that.
Yeah.
And well, this information was from 2020, so things could have changed. I haven't, I haven't looked the statute up yet, but.
It's like a snowmobile sticker used to have to have.
Right.
Have a sticker.
And you still have to have a snowmobile sticker for, for a club, but this, this, this here eliminates the need for another entity such as a club to, to.
This wouldn't be registration, it's just a.
It would be just your state registration and your own insurance.
Your own sticker, yeah.
This is a good one that it does show the, it gives the, the statute for the fines if, you know, so PD can actually enforce from this ordinance, like we just found out we can do with our parking on sidewalks ordinance.
I think the only real investment that, that shows from the town side is signage on each road that ATVs are allowed on the road. Which is something small and simple that can be put on an already existing stop sign or, or sign post.
Right.
Yeah, I guess that's like the town of Whiting, the Lester Whiting Road, they had to put up a sign essentially at their town line that says ATVs allowed.
Okay.
Like I said to you guys, Hubbardton was, that's what I noticed when we brought this up this summer. They have one on Monument Hill Road, right where the town line is and, yeah, it's kind of cool, so.
Benson has them, because if you go to the slaughterhouse in Benson, that State Road or whatever it is, evidently partway down it stops because it looks like there's another road that you would take to go somewhere else, so there's a sign there, you know, saying it starts or stops or whatever.
We, we think this would be a good, good step for the town. I mean, not only will it generate some income for, for the highway department anyways or wherever that money's earmarked. But it'd get people out of their houses out in the town. And maybe if other towns start following, surrounding towns follow suit.
So, yeah, I wanted to talk to Mike. Do you have something to say?
I do.
Yeah.
Does that specific, I haven't seen that one. But it specifically says three and four wheel vehicles?
Three.
Well, there might be some people with three wheels that's allowed there.
It references a state statute for ATVs, so.
Okay, but we gotta make sure that dirt bikes or two-wheel dirt bikes are allowed.
No, we don't.
And dirt bikes may, may fall under the category of, of not so much a recreational vehicle, but a motorcycle at that point where they are required to have the turn signals, the horns, everything like that that a motorcycle would.
And the other thing that Mike and I talked this morning down at the gas station, we gotta make some type of situation and I think Dave talked about this too. They gotta be able to get fuel somewhere here.
Right, and, and I got to thinking about that after we had talked to and that's why I know the agenda said three and four, but opening up class twos would allow a way to get down to the mobile station through Oxbow. You know, or, you know, that's Oxbow, cross the road from there. And then you're, then you're not driving down Route 7, but you're, you're just using it as a crossing, which.
So how, so, uh, state of Vermont, how do they feel about ATVs crossing like Route 7?
It's all you can do is cross.
Yeah, you can cross.
That is allowed?
Yeah.
90 degrees.
90 degrees.
Just likes snowmobiles.
Okay, all right. So, all right, I know I'm blind, but where on here does it say that it costs $10 for the permit?
Oh, it's on a.
It's on their website.
On Bakersfield.
Oh, on the website, okay. I was just looking on that, all right. That's why I'm not saying that it doesn't exist, I just.
And that's just what they charge. I mean, the town of Pittsburgh could, could put a $20 charge on, on a permit if, if they wanted, you know, it's, it's all up to discussion there.
Right.
So these vehicles don't necessarily have to have lights?
Well, they have to.
Directionals?
If you read in there, if you read in there, directionals are not listed, but running with headlights and taillights.
And brake lights.
And brake lights.
With, which 95% of the machines out there now already come with those standard.
Right.
Um, we understand that, you know, you're always gonna have the bad eggs out there.
Yeah.
You do with regular vehicles.
It talks about the manufacturer's exhaust system on there.
Yeah.
Well, that'll stop, yeah, that'll be the thing people are complaining about.
If they're too loud.
Yep.
So this enforcement's gonna fall on Mike's department solely because it's not gonna be a state police thing, am I right?
You're right, and it won't be a game ward.
No.
I do find it favorable for people like Dave Bills or Markowskis because the game wards are being very hard on them. Trying to get to, to places on their farm. You know, even with the orange triangle, that wasn't, that wasn't exempting them. So I think it would be very favorable, you know, for, for a lot of people getting back and forth.
Does a regular four-wheeler fall in this category?
A regular four-wheeler?
Yeah.
Three and four wheels?
Yep.
And even, there's, there's six wheels out there too, but.
Yeah.
No. What do you mean no?
The six wheeler has its own statute.
Okay.
A four-wheeler has its own statute and a three-wheeler has its own statute and a motorcycle has its own statute citation. So you have to.
So you'd have to combine that.
Oh.
Decide to go there.
So I think personally, if we're gonna do this, four and six wheels. I mean, three wheels, there's not a lot of three wheels. I'm not sure we wanna open it up to three wheels.
35 miles an hour on a three-wheeler.
That's kind of dangerous.
Dangerous.
That is dangerous.
And, I mean.
Everybody's still riding those?
The three-wheeler?
Yeah.
His cousin.
Yeah, my cousin.
Boots ahead.
West Rollin'.
My problem. Why, why would be their problem?
Right, West.
I'm just saying, Butch is saying there's different statutes for all of them.
There's a definition.
Let's start with the four-wheelers and six-wheelers.
The fours and sixes, which, you know.
And that's Title 23, 31.
So.
One of the ones I wrote down from a couple days ago.
It might be one of the state statues that's listed in that ordinance already. There was like five or six listed in.
Yeah, there was some stuff in Title 13 and then.
Yep.
Well, that, well, that was on trails.
Title 31.
Yeah.
It's there.
I'll look them up tomorrow.
Chapter 31.
Yeah, I'll look them up tomorrow.
And this is solely for road use, not trail.
This has nothing to do with trails.
Nothing to do with trails.
So the, the trail piece, like if, if we could get this road piece settled, Vasa would be more than willing to kind of chime in and work with private landowners on trail use.
Just for connecting trails.
For connector trails, but.
That's a whole different.
That's a different ball of wax and
Yep.
And involve the board.
Right.
So the road from Florence to Brandon is a class two, am I right?
Yes.
The Blacktop Road.
Yes, it's a class two.
Class two.
Whipple Hall is a class two. We have quite a few class twos in town. Furnace Road.
And a lot of people, if they were, if Brandon was to follow eventually and, and go for this in their town, you would only be really riding down to Syndicate Road and using that class four. I think that's a class four at this point.
No, it's three.
It's a three, so they need a class three to, to go through, but.
Till they take the bridge out.
There is.
There is some support.
Only half of it, right?
For ordinance like this as well.
It's only half of it, Brandon's?
I think those people.
We cut ours off.
Select board.
I was like, I was telling you guys earlier, there was some talk about it pre-COVID, doing it in Brandon too, so.
Pre-COVID?
Pre, oh yeah, we talked about it, it was probably six years ago at this point.
We've, we've heard a lot of towns just talking about it and nothing, you know, it kind of dead ends and nobody carries through.
But this, this ordinance is fairly new. So I, I saw the select board sign it back in October this year.
It's 24.
Yep.
And then we could pull up what Whiting did.
So let me ask you, if somebody had their, you have a, need a driver's license?
Yep, it says that right on that one.
So there is the age limit of?
16.
16 and the.
And the manufacturers of all these four-wheelers have a, have a label on them.
Nobody under 16.
Nobody under 16 or whatever they're designed for. Some of them I think even have 18 on them, I.
Yeah.
You know.
They started putting those stickers on after we were 16.
We, we write them out.
They didn't have them when I was 16.
I got another question if you don't mind.
Yeah.
How about for these little miniature four-wheelers that these little kids can ride? Are we gonna make a?
You have, in the ordinance, I believe it's, you gotta be licensed.
Licensed.
I understand that, well, do we wanna put a CC size minimum for, I mean, like a 90cc?
Well, I don't, I don't think.
You know what I'm saying, a little kid?
No, I know what you're talking about. I don't, I don't know if a CC size would really matter because, you know, you still have to be minimum 16 with a license.
Yeah.
Right. A valid state license. motorcycles go down to what, 50 or?
50cc.
CC.
30 mile an hour on a 50cc, that's not a 50cc.
So, you know. So you need to, you need to look up the definition of an ATV in the statutes. And that'll answer a lot of questions that you have right now.
Okay.
Really precise because they consider an ATV a motor vehicle and subject to all motor vehicle laws.
They can't because it doesn't have the turn signals.
Doesn't have one.
They don't have turn signals.
But, but there's exceptions to every rule.
Right.
And it says in here, this type of provider.
I just sent you the Whiting's.
And if you got a sticker, you're good. Right. Yeah, not necessarily.
So this.
You need to look at that statute carefully.
This has been done as an ordinance, so we'd have to follow the ordinance process and some public hearings and, you know, public notice and stuff, which.
We don't plan on voting on this tonight.
No, 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 you can't anyway. But it would give us some time for us to draft an ordinance and talk with our town attorney and maybe Vasa too and see what, you know, what sort of.
So I don't think Vasa's gonna be much help to anybody because.
Yes and no, but I mean, they're obviously doing trails in towns that already have their roads open, so they, I'm sure they've worked with other municipalities on what to do next after the road is, you know, the ordinance goes into effect. What to do next after the road is, you know, the ordinance goes into effect.
They told us that as long as it, it, if it doesn't pertain to like a private landowner trail, they don't want anything to do with it.
They, they won't share an opinion. They'll probably give you advice and help, but they won't, they don't provide.
Still be worth a call, you know?
Um, but yeah, I think, I think they're willing to, to help.
Yep. Doesn't hurt to ask.
Okay.
So.
We talked about this before over multiple, multiple times. We've all been in favor of it, but you haven't just taken the next step and followed through. So that's.
Six year, five, six, seven years. There's gonna be a lot of questions from people that might not be in favor of this.
Well, which is why the ordinance process, you know, yeah, will give space.
And figuring out what, what roads, um.
Well, there, there's really nothing to figure out. If we're going for class two, three, four, that's all Pittsburgh's made of.
Newport, Newport has them on class.
And state, State Road too.
What was that, Butch?
Newport.
Other than.
Newport has them on.
Seven's US, three state.
You're right. But those are, those are just crossings.
Yep.
Right.
We'll pull up Whiting's as well, let's send that to you.
Kelly just sent it to me.
I sent it to her.
She's been working behind the scenes over here, so. Yeah, they got Route thirty, so that's, you know.
Wow. They've got Route thirty?
And Whiting?
Yeah.
Route thirty goes right through Whiting.
No, 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 but they have that on the.
Oh, I don't know. I'd have to look, but I mean, they're dealing with a state highway there too, so.
As rough as that is, the only thing it's fit for is an ATV. Did I say that all out? Sorry.
You're right though.
It's an awful road.
Yeah.
Terrible.
I just sent it to you to your, your, your email address.
What about me?
I don't have your email address.
I, I can do a lot of things, but read your mind. I learned years ago. That's not a good thing to do. Vibing you.
How about, how about Chief and I work on this and get something in draft form for the next meeting and see what, I mean, we can, I'm gonna do some statute search and see what we come up with and go from there.
Yep.
That sounds good, yeah.
I mean, you got what, half a dozen towns, Whiting, that you can pick and choose the best things from?
Out of all the, the three that we've seen so far, I really think that one from Bakersfield is.
Hey, that, that one, the most cut, right, simple to the point, easiest to understand.
And I think, you know, the big thing is what roads, so you know, we'll shoot for the moon and see what happens.
So they, they're registered? Are they inspected like a car?
No, registered, insured, and a driver's license over sixteen, so.
So the lights and so forth would?
Uh, they, they know all the lights working, the headlights, taillights.
Stoplights.
That would be the same as a car.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Seat belts?
Well, you have seat belts in side by sides, not so much for four wheelers, but motorcycles don't.
Helmet will apply. So on four wheeler, you'd be talking mandatory helmet.
Mandatory helmets on an open cab.
Yeah.
Which then probably would be added in.
Then probably. Helmets are required in a side by side.
Required helmet on any.
Alright. Great.
Alright.
Good to do it.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next step then. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Start the ball.
Thank you.
Alright.
You guys are fans of that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
He's really enjoying it. Happy to get in there for the statute.
Thank you. I've got him passing now, so.
Thank you.
The resource for that would be the city of Newport.
They, they're all, all their roads are open, right?
Yeah, it's an economic boost for, for the city.
You'll have a few in Pittsburgh, I don't think it's gonna be that, that many.
There'll be more if they open the roads.
You think so?
Then there'll be more PD revenue because.
Well, yeah, we'll have more revenue.
Well, let's hope it turns into a good thing.
I know. I'm gonna, I'm thinking it's a positive thing.
It's a good recreational thing of, you know, summertime.
Should be a good.
Yeah, it should be.
I think if people look at it as a privilege versus, you know, entitled, it'll be fine. And I think that the majority of people that do it now respect.
Yeah.
Yep.
The towns because they know it could be taken away.
Like I said.
Benson's had it for a long time.
Well, they've had it a long time, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, let's move on to state statute regarding discontinuance, reclassification of a roadway.
This is just more for um, your information that I, I.
Don't go.
I, I thought I had this at the last meeting and I didn't, so I have given you copies of the statutes that um, pertain to how a road is declassified or discontinued, especially if you look on the first page here, Title nineteen. Uh, seven, section seven ninety-three, which is highways involving two or more towns. So I, I just wanted you guys to be aware of what, you know, what we have. For statutory powers on this as well.
Okay.
Um, still haven't heard anything from a Brandon's select board member. I don't know if anyone else has, so.
No, I haven't. So I mean, I think again, this is just for everyone's information, but we really don't.
But just, I just want you guys to be aware of what it was, you know, what, what can be done, you know, with the public hearings and everything, so.
Again, it's a non-issue until we hear from Brandon anyways, so.
It might die, I don't, but just so you guys are aware.
Alright, errors and omissions from assessor's office.
No, I can do it.
Okay.
I might need to steal your packet, though, say, make myself a copy. So she has two on here. One is um, parcel ID one zero nine five. The mobile home bill of sale from two thousand and twenty-two was not recorded, was not received by the assessor's office until December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. When an abatement letter came in on the property stating it had been dropped off at the town clerk's office previously, and as you can see by attached paperwork, it was signed by people in that office. It just didn't make its way to the assessor's office to be recorded. So she has talked to the gentleman and um, wanted to change the value to reflect the fact that that mobile home is no longer on that parcel. Um, and then abatement will have to do the twenty-three, twenty-four tax year because they've asked for that too, but because it's before December thirty-first, select board can do the one for.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's that one. And then the second one, I actually brought to her attention when I saw it as a delinquent billing for parcel zero seven seven five. And I told her this one was definitely moved, sold, or disposed of um, in a dumpster before June first. I had numerous conversations with the female in this party, as well as her family members who own the lot that it was on. And it was definitely gone before uh, the July one tax year started. As of May second, according to Lisa's pictures, it was already off from its pad and ready to be moved. So it was, and it's definitely not there now. Lisa went and took a ride and it's definitely gone, gone. So she said instead of taking it off completely, she um, did additional depreciation because it was also found to be uninhabitable.
Yep, okay. Pretty straightforward. Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further questions about this? Alright. Um, so. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, um, code of ethics, investigation and enforcement ordinance.
So um, during session last year, the town clerk did um, pass this code of ethics bill that is now statute. Um, this was given to us from the league last week. There's a little breakdown of what the, what the ordinance is. It takes effect January first. Um, I don't know if you guys have read through this, but it requires now that we all have to do annual ethics training. Um, the ordinance that the league is recommending that the town adopt is attached to, to the back of this. It's pretty straightforward right now. There's a complaint form on the back, and this is where any, a member of the public, anyone can file a complaint against any officer of the public now with this code of ethics. So um, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to read through this at all, but.
I assume the state's paying for the uh, courses?
Probably not.
They are?
They mandate it, but they don't pay for it, is that correct?
No, they will.
Oh, they will.
They will.
They're gonna do a train to trainer operation.
Oh.
Type thing, so that.
That's what.
Head of departments have to be trained. Bill is way more extensive than what the league has given Dave. It's really very, very extensive and very specific. Uh, if you get a chance, you wanna look up H one seventy, or Act.
Act one seventy-one.
Act one seventy-one and read through the second half. The first half pertains mostly to legislators and government officials, and the second half pertains to uh, municipal officials. And there's a list of people that have, that are mandated to be uh, uh, trained. Extensive list all the way down, even though there are elected positions, uh, town clerk, town treasurer, uh, assessor, if you have a budget committee, they have to be trained.
Moderator.
Moderator has to be trained. It's very extensive.
World Commission.
Any head, any. Any head, any head of any department, your fire chief, your town highway supervisor, your sewer plant operators, uh, and, and so on and so forth. I was in here, spoke to you the bill after it left the house and cautioned you that it was coming. Uh, I tried to amend the bill in two different sections of the bill. One, neither of my amendments passed in the House, surprise.
No surprise there.
The Senate, the Senate did uh, correct, uh, helped me out a little bit, and they took some of the money out of the bill, took a lot of money out of the bill. And uh, and consolid, actually consolidated the list of who needs to be trained, but it didn't go far enough. But this is. I, I would say this, and I, I said it to you, then this is clearly an overreach by.
It is.
State government into the municipalities. Uh, one of the amendments I had in the House was to let BLCT handle it.
They can't run their own house.
But that was shot down, right?
Now, that got, that got shot down, that got shot down.
It was shut down early on.
The minute I sat down after presenting the amendment, it didn't, didn't take long. Uh, the league is, is gonna have to be your partner. You don't have a choice. You have to do this. Because if you don't, the guy that's the ethics commissioner in the first half of the bill has some power. He could come in and he could, he could, he could, don't necessarily find the town, but he could make, not hypothesizing here. But he could make it difficult for the town to get grant money.
I haven't seen anything in this book, Butch, about fines. It's been more of disciplinary action.
Disciplinary action. So they, they could say, uh, they, they could say, well, until you do this, you're not eligible to apply for X, Y, Z, X. Or those type of things. It'll be, it'll be a punitive thing. Uh, this bill's written to be punitive and not education. So it's, it's something that you need, you need to do. Uh, and it requires, it probably will do away with your ethics committee. Because now you're gonna have a chief executive ethics officer. And uh, then to move complaints along and all the department heads will report to that person. Uh, it's, it's worth a, an hour's read, to read and understand the bill. And if you could do it in an hour.
One seventy-one?
Act one seventy-one.
Look up the statute, it's twenty-four VSA nineteen ninety-seven, and it's on the second page of this. That'll show you what made it to the, the green books.
Yeah. All one seventy-one made it to green books, or one seventy-one is written differently because it leaves out some language that's already current law. So the current law now is all in the green books, including the language that's left out.
So I know Ann was doing some research on it yesterday afternoon.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, you have more to add?
So the select board needs to choose who their person is going to be that is going to be their ethics person. Um, and it can be the town manager, it can be the head of the select board, it can be someone else. Um, but a person or, or a position, not specifically a person's name, but a position has to be the one that is your ethics person. Um, that has to be voted on and decided. The ordinance has to be approved. Um, everything has to go up on the website, which we already have the new ethics policy up there. We already have a grievance form up there, which was VLCT's first go around with it. Um, but we do need the ordinance, VLCT put it out December tenth. I found it, I think, on like the eleventh or twelfth.
So just throwing this out here. My position is listed on one of the ones that can be held in violation. So.
That's what popped into my head.
Like how?
How can you be the enforcement officer?
Then we'd have to have two enforcement officers, and this is.
When I wrote, wrote in on the ordinance, I guessed what you guys would do, and I'm not a mind reader, and I can definitely change the ordinance. But I said that people could either turn it into the town manager or the chair of the select board.
Take the chair.
Um, I said either or, and either or, so that they would be fluid, so that if it was against the chair of the select board, the town manager would do it and vice versa. That way, it, the ethical concern would not be there, that they're taking care of their own thing, because that's another whole ethics.
Alright, no kidding.
Another can of worms.
So I, I made it fluid in that sense, but it can be changed if you guys wanna do somebody else instead. It, it's a matter of deleting out positions and putting in positions. You list titles, you don't list names.
So.
When do we have to have this done by?
January first.
It has to be in place by January first?
That's what it's supposed to be.
Uh, kind of short notice.
Yeah, it's very short notice, it was very.
The league, the league should have had that to you months ago. They should have had it to you September, October, because they knew it was coming.
So we tell them, go pound sand till we get time to do it.
I mean, we couldn't. It's an ordinance. It's gonna take how long to get through?
You'd be the first to complain.
Yeah.
We don't even have time to adopt.
Mike, I got broad shoulders, I don't care.
We don't even have time to adopt an ordinance before.
I, I would, I would advise, I mean, just, just me, 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 I'd say, you know, just keep moving forward on it.
Just move forward, yeah. We're doing our due diligence.
And you also got that recourse that you can say, da, 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 da. Dave was allowed to do that.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I, I wonder, even wonder if it should be a town employee that's the head ethics person.
So what are the options?
A little concerning.
Joe Citizen.
Joe Citizen, yeah.
Because that's kind of what our ethics board is now.
We've got an ethics board, that has nothing to do with those.
Yeah.
That's the way I know. That makes more sense.
Yeah.
Is there a head of the ethics board?
Well, there's a board.
I know each for it.
No, I'm talking about the town.
Trying to think who was.
Ronnie Smith was on it.
Helen was on it.
Hold on, I can tell you.
And it's gonna, and it's gonna involve some time if you get an ethics complaint.
Well, yeah, because you have to investigate it.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll get repealed this uh, biennium.
Go ahead, I hope so.
Put a bill forward.
I'm gonna write myself a note, repeal.
Just repealed from section uh, twenty-two on.
There's a lot of things up there that should repeal.
Yeah.
You think?
I honestly think if they met every two years, things would probably straighten out. So I think.
And three month maximum time they can meet.
Exactly.
Or some duh.
They have too much time to think.
Work on frivolous things, right.
So you can't really toss it to your ethics committee because your town clerk is part of the ethics committee. It's Glenn Spalding, Helen McKinley, and Ronald Smith.
I knew it was Ronnie.
I was thinking it was Butch.
Yeah.
The only clear thing, and I, I think it's maybe a little bit, but might help the towns a little bit, here's a, a very specific conflict of interest definition and explanation in this bill. And uh, you might wanna familiarize yourselves with that, so you know what it says. Uh, but it basically uh, it's, it's a lot of words. Says a lot, and, and it actually does a lot. So you wanna take a look at that, uh, when, in your spare time. That's in.
One Route seven's finished.
Did you read that? Section nineteen ninety-two.
Spare time is 1 root 7 is finished.
Of 23, PSA?
Yeah.
No, just the 1997.
And it may not, and it may not be in that, in their handout.
1972 is for adopting the... 1992 or 1972? I don't have that one. I'm sure, well, it starts with 1990.
What a good year.
I'll just pull the whole, that whole section and...
Lots of different people up there.
The impetus behind passing this thing?
I don't know, Dan. It was really late, it was the last, maybe two weeks of session, it just started two or three weeks.
They're doing it with law enforcement too.
They are, and you know, some of it came out of St. Albans, Mike, I think, with the sheriff up there. Because the chair of the committee was the representative from St. Albans. And the chair of the committee had an axe to grind with Sheriff Gilmore. And they were doing everything, they couldn't, they were doing a lot of different things to get to... The part about the legislature, that, it's fine, I mean, it's good, it's at a different level than what you are, but it's, it is an unfunded mandate for the town to do this.
And then to create a statewide, you know, ordinance because of one person? Ridiculous.
Yeah, but that's what they do.
The chair of the committee, the chair of this committee that wrote this bill is no longer in the legislature.
Ah, well, that's right.
Well, we'll just move forward with what we have to do right now and see where it goes.
Yeah, my, 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 just my cautionary tale to you folks, and that's why I'm here, and that's just be really careful. Really, really careful, you've got to keep things forward, but be really careful.
Be available to help us go through this?
Read the same words you're gonna read. Yeah.
I'm sure Butch will be in my office next week. Oh, no, I won't be here next Monday.
What time, what are you doing, 10:30 Tuesday?
You can come to my house next week.
Oh, I'm sorry, are you on vacation next week?
Pour you a cup of coffee. Yeah, I'm on vacation next week.
Or anything else we should know about this before we move on? No? Okay. I thought you were looking for something to tell us.
I think we better look this over.
Yes, we should. All right, town report dedication and photos.
I need ideas.
Right, that's something we usually do in executive, but I guess...
It doesn't really fall under an executive session material, though.
Well, the photo we do, we do openly.
Yeah, the photo can be open, but no, the dedication we always do and it's...
That's personnel.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yep. So, yeah, it is.
If, all right.
It's personnel.
It's more not.
We're gonna classify it.
Okay.
You take us to court.
Yeah, we've been doing it forever, so...
Not gonna change that.
Well, I guess we can't now. If we thought ahead, we could've switched this one to that.
Yeah, I guess we could've. I guess it's too late now.
That's a personnel.
You can certainly email us any ideas to, that we can collect and go from there.
Same thing with photos, what, we have, we have some good photographers in town. Oh, that's the Millstones, that, at the Historical Society. They were hoping to get those on the cover. They were donated this year from, from the Davis Farm.
Oh, right, I remember seeing that in the paper.
Didn't know that.
Yeah, they're cool. They're sitting right behind the Historical Society.
Behind it?
Yeah, they don't have like a real like, like space forum right now, but they got donated just...
18th of January?
Which Davis Farm?
Yeah, in order to have it in the rough draft. Well, actually, it's gonna depend on how you'd handle the January potential move of date of meeting.
Must be, yeah.
Carrie Davis, I think, went and picked him up. So, it's whoever she's related to.
They're all...
Carrie?
No, Terry.
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 Oh, yeah, she has it now.
She has some of the other farm, she has some, I think, farm equipment that came from there, but the Millstones are at the Historical Society.
But I think they were at the Harry Davis Farm.
Okay.
Yeah. And what's her name owns it now?
Ramona and Joanne.
Oh, yeah. Joanne still around?
No, she's incarcerated.
She's around.
She's unavailable.
So, I will, I can take care of the photo if everybody's okay with that. I can reach out to the, it belongs to the Historical Society, so I can find it and I, you know, could find somebody and take a really nice photo of it.
We usually have, what, two photos for the front cover and the back cover?
I know, so...
Who usually does them? Andy, what's his name, is in town, Wilson. He's a professional photographer.
They've been, well, like last year, we got a picture from Peter Cosgrove.
Right.
Yeah.
Ones that people take that are really...
Really nice, yeah. Could be anyways.
I know. I think Aaron Ujier already took some pictures of the Millstones, but we always have like a, you know, a front cover picture and an inside, so if we can think of another local, it is always really nice to have.
Yeah, for sure.
Do you want any pictures of the project here on Plains Road somewhere in the town of Portland?
Good.
Good.
Wouldn't hurt. Picture the bridge.
Bridge 108.
Make people happy.
Picture 108, that'd be...
Two plow trucks going through there, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a historical event. It won't occur in 80 years.
So, there's some, I didn't recognize the name of the person you said, but that person's in town?
Andrew Wilson, yeah.
Do you want, can you reach out to him? Do you have his info to reach out to him and see if he wants, is interested to...
He does my drone stuff, too.
Oh, cool. All right, so we got pictures, at least, you know, kind of mostly taken care of.
You want him to do the Millstones or you got those?
I think Aaron's gonna, I, she's already, yeah, Aaron will do the...
So, this would be...
This would be, you know, we're gonna have two pictures, so whatever, I guess if, I guess if everybody wants it to be, see what he thinks, see if he has any, has any interesting pictures around town that he, you know, already has.
I'll talk to him.
We may have a nice drone shot or something.
That's, yeah, I know, when you said drones, I was like, yeah.
Something different, nice.
That would be great.
Tony Lockwood had cool ones.
I know, he did actually have the, he actually has good drone stuff of the, of the bridge.
Does he?
Yep.
He had really, really good ones.
That might not be a bad idea.
Who did?
Tony Lockwood.
That's, that's a big event.
He's second in command of first response.
Maybe we talk to him.
And that's, that's the big event in town for two years.
For two years.
I know.
I would think that should be part of it.
Well, probably two and a half at least now.
Well, yeah.
What?
The bridge.
It'll be done in the fall of '25 as it's scheduled.
Yeah, but I'm saying, it's been a big event for the town. It's a long time coming.
Lot of hearings.
Controversial.
And then, okay, so because we are kind of late with the whole dedication thing and we can't do it in executive tonight, if people have ideas, I guess maybe to tell them, to Dave, and we'll talk about it at night.
Any parameters for that?
We just try to find somebody in town who's, you know, contributed.
Doesn't have to be a past employee or anything.
No, it could be anybody.
Can be anybody.
Anybody. And it could be a deceased person in the past, or it can be, we would like to do somebody alive.
Yeah, we've...
Not always deceased, you know.
That year they did the highway department back when it...
Yes, and it could be a whole group, can be...
Oh, yeah. Remember that.
Can be anything.
Yeah.
Sometimes we run out of ideas.
Oh, yeah.
Except, and I can't remember, I'll have to go find my, find my agenda from this time last year because we had, we had two, we had a couple, yeah, there's two or three people that we thought about.
Yeah.
So, find your notes.
I'm gonna find my notes. Okay, all right, so we'll get going on that.
When does that have to go to printer?
She has to have it no later than middle of January, like...
If we go to the next line of business that we can, that's gonna be the...
Oh, right.
That's gonna be the answer.
Okay, all right, well, let's move on to that then.
So, looking at potential schedule change from the 15th to the 22nd, one because we're meeting on the 8th, the 15th is the following week, the 22nd by then we'll have petitions in for the warrant, so that would be a good time to meet to hopefully approve the, or the warning. The warning for town meeting. And everything should be at the town clerk's side. What's the deadline, is it the 20th?
No, so, because we have our town meeting on Monday night instead of Tuesday, I believe everything has to be into Helen by the 17th, because I believe the due date is the 18th. So, we have to kick it back the one day to the 17th. Then if there's any issues or whatever, they have 24 hours from being notified by town clerk that they have some inaccuracies to correct or whatever. I have to have everything ready to go and to the printers by the 27th in the morning. So, if we meet on the 22nd, that gives me two days to correct anything that you guys find wrong with the needing correction with the draft I'll give you.
Okay.
Probably that day. I don't know, I'll have it quite ready for your packets on the 17th when we do packets normally. Because of the due dates and everything.
All right, so we'll, so by the 22nd?
I would be able to have the warning written and have the draft completed for...
Okay, great.
To approve both. But I need you to approve the budget on the 8th in order to...
To do that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get, I get it, okay.
Wouldn't Helen be responsible for dropping the warning?
I've done it the last two years. And John did it before that.
So, the discussion is to go ahead and move the meeting to the 15th?
Yeah, to the 22nd.
22nd.
From the 15th to the 22nd.
Yeah, so we'll do 8th and 22nd.
Yep.
Well, do we want to discuss that now?
Sure.
Changing that to the 7th, so you can be here?
It's up to you guys, I don't mind, I can try to...
I mean, we're changing...
Everything else.
Everything, I'm just thinking, if we're gonna do it, we do it all at once.
Yeah, why not, I mean, we could beat it off night, doesn't matter, probably post it.
You have a lot going on that night before?
Well, is that...
Uh, I don't know. I know.
You're driving up on...
She has to be up there the 8th, so she won't be back probably.
I know.
Right.
Let's move it to the 7th, not a big deal. I'll make a motion, we change our meeting to the 7th of Janu, of January.
Well, and you want the 22nd, too.
And the 22nd.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? How do you feel about that? Can you make it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make sure, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
There.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being so flexible. Um, all right, anything on the orders? More payroll?
I do.
Okay.
All right, so...
Is this yours or Mark's?
Uh, these...
A combo?
They are, well, they are a combo, yes. I'll do, this one, this first one is mine.
Okay.
Uh, we have, from Central Vermont Truck Repair, we got Boommobile tires in labor for $683.16. And then we go to Raven Tire and Service, Boommobile tires mountain balance, $1,269. Which one is that?
They put new tires on the Boommobile, that's all I can tell you, I'd have to ask chief.
So, we put, let's see, 12, uh, almost $1,900 worth, four tires, $1,900?
So, Boommobile says maintenance and on Central Vermont...
Well, here it says tires.
And then we purchased tires. I'd have to ask chief, I don't know why there would be two there, so I, I'll look it up right now.
I mean, the, the...
Yellow.
The 683, that sounds, yeah, okay, they're expensive tires, but tires aren't cheap, but...
Where are you gonna buy four tires for $683, Dave? I mean, we went through this last year. Tires are expensive, I mean, I bought, we've got tires for the, you know, first response vehicle that I found on Walmart online and it was still 800 and something dollars.
Those are 10 ply tires, too, they're not...
Those are heavy tires.
Oh, yeah, they're heavy, heavy tires.
For the Durango?
No, these are even heavier than the police cars.
For the ones for the Boommobile?
Are they?
Yeah, they're like 10, 12 ply, they're huge.
For the Boommobile?
Oh, yeah, it was an ambulance, they have, that's heavy, that's a heavy freaking car.
Okay, all right.
Now, I don't know, normally the host company paid for that maintenance, so I don't think it should be a town, normally I don't know. I'm not in that, you know, but...
What's your second?
We usually get reimbursed, that kind of stuff from the host company.
Second page?
Uh, well, it's next to the last page.
Well, you might want to check.
I know, so 2470 and then what's the other, uh, number?
Uh, da da, 490. It's on the first page.
Oh.
So, we did, we moved wheels and have no tires installed at Raven.
Oh, I see.
And that was tires plus labor.
Yeah.
And what other one are you talking about?
Central Vermont, and it's 2470.
That was, that was Central Vermont. Central Vermont Truck Repair. So, this says, description of labor and services provided, and this is, I'm looking at the Central Vermont right here, truck repair.
Okay.
Remove wheels and have no tires installed at Raven Tire. So... I'd have to ask chief handful why they did it that way, I don't know.
Okay.
Normally, any haunted house expenses normally reimbursed to the town. We pick up, we pay for it, laws in the past, but yet we get reimbursed at the end for any expenses.
Yeah.
Stay incurred there, always been that way. So, I, same with Boommobile, as far as I know, Butch, right?
Yeah.
You might want to check with Pat, because I know she sent a bill to...
Yeah, I think she sent the bill out to the host company and they reimburse the town, Yeah, I think she sent the bill out to the host company, and they reimburse the town. So, it may be a reimbursement coming in to cover that.
Ray Bean says that we did six retreads, power balance, all tires.
I know.
That would be for a truck.
That's not Boo Mobile.
I think something just missed moment here. Check with Billy.
Yeah, check with Bill.
Yeah.
Bill'll know what they did.
I'd have to see what vehicle this is, this might be quarter gone.
You posted?
Yeah, I lost my posting. Pretty horrible.
Oh, it's on the floor.
On the floor.
Thank you. All right, so that was mine. Mark was wondering, why, when we have bulk salt at the salt shed, we're spending $1,000 for salt for this building?
Because the town has historically purchased salt from Blue Seal every other year. They buy it by the pallet, because the sidewalk's out here, and that's what it is, it's the sidewalk salt, because the road salt would be corrosive to the property.
Okay, that's fine, I figured that's what it was, but I, you know. And it's an every other year thing.
Right, we buy it by the pallet and save us a bunch of money.
Okay.
All right.
All right, any other questions on the orders? All right, we can start signing those.
I gave it to you, it should be...
It's a heating oil contract.
Shoot, where's my fence?
It was a three-year contract.
Recently?
Last year it was on...
Three years?
Yep.
I put it in with everything else, Dave, so it should be all set.
Yeah, getting tired.
Donna, did that meeting, did you come here right from that meeting? Did it go that much longer?
Yeah. You're pulling your job, man. You're pulling your job.
I know. You'll be quiet.
Recording stopped.
Good thing. I'm about to swear.
Well, if anyone has anything else, then if I could please have a motion to go in executive in accordance with 1 VSA 313A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place a municipality or person involved at a substantial disadvantage to discuss the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain its reasons for the decision in open meeting, 1 VSA 313A 3, to include the town manager and chief orful.
So, move.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.